Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 16th Planning Board Meeting. Nancy, please take attendance.
Yes. Commissioner Narenberg. Commissioner Wolfson.
Present.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter. Absent.
Yes, he's absent.
Commissioner Michelle.
Present.
And Chairman Leo.
Present. I think another member is about to join, so we'll.
Commissioner Barra, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's not on yet, but when he does, we'll just record him. Okay, so on this evening's agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes, 140 Marbledale Road and 151 Marbledale Road. So at this point, can I have the motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 19? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so at this point, I call up 140 Marbledale Road, please.
Sauce.
So if you're not the applicant, please mute yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Steven Venarussi, attorney here on behalf of the applicant.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Steven, are you representing 140 Marbledale?
Yes, Steve Accinelli, who I believe had previously appeared in formal meeting, had a conference, so I will be. So I believe the applicant is on. He was just on momentarily. I think he's trying to reconnect.
Yeah, I'm here.
So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to begin.
Please.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steven Venarussi. I'm with the law firm of Venarussi, Curtor Schwarz and Curtor. I'm appearing here on behalf of the applicant, Calisto Burton. We are seeking site plan approval for the property located at 140 Marbledale Road. This application, as the board knows, involves a change of use to allow for the establishment of a certified testing laboratory. The size of the lot is approximately 9,095 square feet, consisting of a two-story structure. The plan calls for the first floor, which measures approximately 3,200 square feet. To, and this will consist of parking, storage, and a material testing lab. The second floor of the structure would consist of offices only. No exterior work would be performed as part of this project. It would solely include interior renovations. As discussed at the Planning Board work session via my coworker, Steven Accinelli, attorney, the applicant has made revisions to the drawing, which I believe have been submitted to this board. I'd like to also mention.
We haven't received those, Steve, just for, I haven't received them.
Okay, I will confirm that. I was understanding that the board had received them, so I will, I will check that. Mr. Calisto Burton, who is the applicant, is also an engineer and the owner of the property. With the board's permission, I would like to allow him to walk the board through the design and the use elements of the project.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Calisto Burton. I own Certified Testing Labs, and just by way of background, I am a professional engineer. And my main gig is I'm principal of Burton Engineering, which is in Glen Rock in New Jersey and Southbridge, Massachusetts. We're a general engineering firm, civil engineering, structural, mechanical, electrical, you know, really supporting construction industry and development. And we've expanded a little, you know, into the materials testing portion of the business. And so I purchased Certified Testing Labs a little while ago, and before that, we opened up another testing company that actually my wife runs in Western New Jersey. So the idea is to have the area covered. Anyway, so Certified Testing Labs is just that. It's a testing lab for the construction industry. We have both inspectors and testing facilities. The inspectors will inspect components of construction. We call them third-party inspectors or special inspectors. We'll look at the soil before the footings are placed on it to make sure it's properly compacted. Will we check the reinforcing steel that was put in to make sure it was put in properly before the concrete is placed? Then we'll be there to monitor the concrete placement and take samples of concrete to be tested in a laboratory, which would be done here. We also do welding inspections and other inspections that are required by, well, in this case, the city of New York for the, because it relieves the building inspectors of doing their job. Because there's too much work going on. We also do the same thing in Westchester County and then in New Jersey, although the designations are a little different. So in this building, what we do is those concrete cylinders I mentioned would come back to this facility and be tested. What I'll do is I'll show, if I could share my screen?
Yes.
You may go ahead.
Okay, let me get the right drawings. Okay. Okay, we, okay, good, we see it. So I'm going to go to. So here we have our first floor of the building, and you can see the first floor is basically two garages with a storage room and a bathroom and a boiler room. So we will be installing a curing box, which is basically, well, how we build it is a walk-in cooler. But we don't have to keep it cold. We're keeping it at 73 to 75 degrees. And where you have to control the humidity, so it'll be 100% humidity, which is really not that hard to do. So that's the main component. We made an equipment plan. Let me go, I have another, okay. So this is the basic equipment plan, which you saw at the work session. We have various components. I'll just walk you through. We have, again, two overhead doors, and you'll see, we made arrangements for parking. But when we come in, we take the cylinders, the cylinder, the concrete is poured into a plastic cylinder. That cylinder is recyclable, so the first thing we do is strip the cylinder off the concrete, and we recycle those cylinders. And then we bring them into the curing room, and you see, we have shelves here, and the concrete will cure for seven days or 28 days, and sometimes 56 days, depending on the requirements of the project. So they're in this room curing in 100% humidity at 74 degrees, say. And then we take them out and test them. So we have two brake machines. I show one just outside the existing boiler room. And another one close to it. So we have prep table. There's things we have to do. We have to measure the cylinders, weigh the cylinders, and make sure, you know, because it's part of our quality control and requirements to analyze the concrete and make sure when we, we put pressure on it and we make it, and it breaks. And you've heard of 2,500 PSI concrete or 3,000 PSI concrete. Well, we certify that it meets those requirements for the project. And generally, it does. It's, sometimes people make mistakes, but that's why we have to check it. Because if you've got a 10 or 20-story building and someone made a mistake in the concrete at the foundation, we got to know about it. So that's why these labs are built. We also have a soils lab, I mentioned, will do compaction testing. We'll also do some analysis of the soil, make sure it's suitable for drainage or other uses, so we can analyze the soil. So this is all non, the soils is non-destructive. We're talking, and we're not testing for contaminants. It's just structural components, amount of clay, amount of sand and silt, that sort of thing. And so we need shelving and that sort of, you know, to support the lab. There's an existing storage room, which we will put a lot of our equipment. There's quite a bit of testing equipment that'll go out in the field. That'll be stored here, you know, both to test the compaction of the concrete and other things like that. And so we have a, and fortunately, there is a nice, large storage room that's probably 18 feet tall, which we'll make the use of there. Okay, so we do recycle, as I mentioned, the plastic cylinders, and we also recycle the concrete. So we break the concrete, we put it in a dumpster, and it goes to a recycling yard. So we're not generating any waste from this facility. So I'm going to show you, we modified the equipment plan to show parking. And this is what we submitted, but apparently the board members may not have received. We have 15 employees. Only five of them need vehicles to park here. And one vehicle is our, is a truck that has equipment to do welding inspections, you know, the x-ray welds and so forth. So the board at the work session raised a concern about the vehicles backing up and hitting equipment. So what we show here is we proposed to put in a series of bollards, and you've seen the bollards, a large black plastic base and an orange bollard that comes up, so people could see it. You could, you know, sometimes they put them in the middle of the road or on the lane to designate where it is. But also, so that gives you visual stop, and then also we added wheel stops for the cars, so that they don't back into the equipment that's there. And these wheel stops are removable, because we may have to, you know, we will periodically have to get these dumpsters and roll them out, so that the carters can take them. Right? Just a little bit more about the equipment. We have what we call the non-destructive lab. That's where we're looking at materials, not breaking them, again, welding inspections, that sort of thing. We have in the corner a concrete mixer. We very seldom have ever used it. But if you're going to have a certified testing lab for concrete, you've got to be able to do design mixes, and that's.
You there?
I think.
Yeah.
Like his screen froze. I think he's trying to reconnect now.
Frozen in time.
Yeah, he's trying to reconnect right now.
Mueller. Mueller, anyone?
Yes, he's connecting again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. All right. Anyway, I'll be, I'll be brief. So that's what's going on in the bottom. On the second floor, we have office space that hasn't changed, and we'll have three employees upstairs. I'll visit once in a while. We have another lab supervisor that'll visit once in a while.
Can you put the document back up again?
So I'll show you the second floor. So there are four offices upstairs. This was the old owner's, Bud, his name is. So that's a giant office. That's my office. Like I said, I won't be there very often, but we have a conference room in there. So we have three offices for our administrative staff upstairs. And then the lab techs will come up and use the, another office that's in the back corner of the building.
So there's no work proposed upstairs whatsoever, correct?
Oh, no work. We're just painting and putting in new phone system. That's it.
Okay. Can we go back to your equipment plan, please? All right. So when we met at the workshop, we talked about the hours of operation, the hours of operation still going to be seven to five?
Yes.
Okay. And we talked about that you potentially only about five people will be working at this site at one time, right?
Correct.
All right. And I think it was three, three would be admin and two would be working downstairs, working with the concrete cylinders and soils and things of that nature, right?
Correct.
So from a noise perspective, you indicated that there was very little noise. It basically sounds like it's a hydraulic press. You put your cylinder in, you put the pressure on the cylinder, on the concrete, and when it fails, the test stop, right?
Correct, and a little pop.
I was going to say, can you describe the noise? I mean, it's going to be, it's not going to escape, it's not going to be heard outside your building, correct?
No, no, not at all.
All right, just want to make sure, all right. And then you're not going to have any visitors coming to the job site, is that correct? In other words, you're not going to have contractors coming in, dropping off cylinders, or the cylinders are only there from your inspectors, correct?
Right, they come, our inspectors, and it's required that way. We bring them to the site. So we will park in front of the garage door for whatever it takes to unload the cylinders, 10 minutes, 20 minutes at the most, and bring them in, and then the operator leaves.
And that's basically done at the end of the day, correct?
Yes. Well, sometimes we go collect the cylinders at the very beginning of the day and bring them back. So it may be at 10 o'clock in the morning, but then again, or it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon, so it's.
So is it two drop-offs a day, or is it one drop-off a day? I just got a sense of what you're doing.
It's generally one drop-off a day, but I said, sometimes they may have to go pick something else up. But what we try to do is have the truck go out, make the rounds, and come back.
Okay. And then we also spoke about, you said you, because it's dusty dirty, you went to be hosing down the the concrete work area, and the building department had some concerns about having sediment go into our sewer lines. And there's a discussion about potentially putting in some interceptors. I know you said that the, that there's some pits below the floor drain, but I'm not sure if that they intercept. So that's something you probably have to work closely with the building department to kind of resolve. We want to make sure that we're not, we're not dumping any sort of contaminants into our sewer system.
Right. So, so yes, and while we sweep regularly, we have to sweep the lab, and there is a floor drain. And this past weekend, I went there just to check it out, and there is no sump. So it's, it's what I would, I'll work out with the building department, but we could just put an elbow on the outlet pipe so that there's always water in there and sediment can settle before it discharges. But I'll work that out with the building department.
Okay. And then we talked about the parking situation. We, I know you're proposing five inside your facility, however, the three that you show at the front door, it's kind of very difficult to really make that work. Because you have, your cars are wider than the building garage door opening. So the reality of someone parking the way you show in plan here is not likely. And facing, it seems kind of dangerous for your, for your structure. You know, I'm not sure, for example, your pickup and your bollards right behind the pickup there, I'm not sure how is it going to back in, back out. And we had talked about just placing two parking spaces in the front portion of the garage to right-hand side, and then having the third vehicle parked outside. For some reason, I'm not seeing it on the drawing here.
Oh, that was brought to my attention late last week, so there wasn't any time to submit the plans. But yes, our other attorney had communications, and, and we talked about just having two vehicles parked here. And then that there is a parking space looking at the floor plan just to the left of the building. That's right now striped for loading. We don't need it for loading, and I'll have to admit that I have parked there. So that the town talked about converting that to a metered parking space, and that if we need it, we would use the meter and park there.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because, all right, so I want to make sure this plan gets updated before it's submitted, finally submitted to the building department. Because we're showing you parking, two parking, two cars in this loading dock area.
Sure.
And now it'll give you more room to, to make your, your lab a little more functional.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add, yeah, I have spoken to Mr. Accinelli about the parking with the two spaces. He's aware of that. So we'll make sure that's corrected and addressed with the building department.
Okay.
Antonio?
Yes, sir.
I spoke to the chief and the lieutenant, and there were plans to move that stop bar back, put a meter head in, and put the additional parking spot in the front.
Okay, that's awesome. Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions for this applicant?
Not for me. It looks like a good application.
No, I talked pretty thorough in, on the questions that we discussed prior, I think.
I'd like to agree most of the questions, considering the contaminants and things like that has been addressed.
All right. So at this moment, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second? Okay, wait, you second? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
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 Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on this application?
I make a motion to the public hearing be closed.
Okay, I will second that. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, I'd like to read the resolution, the Village of Tocco planning board resolution decision. Applicant owner certified testing laboratories, location of the project is 140 Marbledale Road, Tocco, New York, section 67, block three, lot 10C and 10D. Description of project, occupancy of occupied and existing buildings for offices and material testing laboratories. SECRE resolution pursuant to the regulations, the SECRE, this board finds that the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirement of SECRE, and it's implementing regulations. This board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan of application, that the action taken here in shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that in negative declaration, it hereby adopted with this action. Nancy, please have a second, please.
Second.
Nancy, please take a call.
Commissioner Narenberg.
Or.
Commissioner Barra.
Or.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Or.
Commissioner Michelle.
In favor.
And Chairman Leo.
In favor. The following is a resolution, decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco, New York. Applicant certified testing laboratories is the owner of the building located at 140 Marbledale Road, Tocco. Said building was formerly occupied by Besse and Oil. Applicant proposes to operate a concrete testing facility. During the work session, the applicant represented that there are no chemical use in the testing process, and that the process uses moisture and pressure from the equipment listed on the plan. Applicant further will use a space for executive offices for the business. Applicant plans call for five indoor parking spaces. However, we feel that only four can be utilized, but we find that indoor parking is sufficient for its use. The business will be housed in an existing building, and the proposed use, we find, will have little or no impact on the parking or traffic in the area. We therefore find that the applicant has met all aspects of 7-1 of the Village of Tocco zoning code, and the application is approved. The drawing presented to the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco are dated 10/19/2021, received 10/20/2021. Total three pages, A through 100, A101, A12, and A201. So Gary, we need to make an amendment to that, because we didn't receive the updated drawing. So. Yeah, so, Bill, did you receive the updated drawings? Were they filed?
Yes, I received them on Thursday.
So Antonio, why don't we just say that?
Those are the numbers.
Men, those are the numbers?
Yes.
I know that they're numbers, but it has, there has to be a revision date. Calisto, do you know what the revision date is, please?
Yeah, the revision date of the equipment plan is November, November 3rd.
3rd?
November 3rd.
Okay. I'll make the, I'll make the change and I'll send it out. So just to read the last sentence, the drawings presented to the Planning Board of the Village of Tocco are dated 10/19/2021, received on 10/20/2021, and revised drawing submitted on 11/3/2021, and the drawing pages are the same, 101, 102, and 103, and 201. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Every representation of the applicant made in its application and presentation will be a condition of this approval. Any deviation from the representation shall be, shall be cause for the revocation of said approval. Can I have a second, please?
Again.
Nancy, please take a call.
Commissioner Narenberg.
Or.
Commissioner Barra.
Or.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Or.
Commissioner Michelle.
In favor.
And Chairman Leo.
In favor. Calisto, welcome to Tocco. I hope you have much success. Wish you guys much success. Be a good neighbor, and all will be great.
Well, thank you very much. I really do look forward to becoming a member of the Tocco community. It's great.
Great.
Good luck to you.
Have you.
All the best.
Welcome, and good luck.
All right. So at this point, we'll take 151 Marbledale Road, please.
Okay. I think I'm waiting for Zep and Ralph to come back.
All ready?
Yep. I'm just waiting for my client and Zef to come back, or he disappeared for a minute.
Oh, they are here. They're here.
They are, okay, no problem.
They can unmute.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Zev and Ralph are here.
Okay. My name is.
Are you?
My name is Chris Carson. I'm the architect for the tenants at 151 Marbledale Road. And my tenants, my clients are Zef and Ralph there. Do you want to introduce yourself, Gus?
Who's Zef and who's Ralph?
I'm Zef. I'm Ralph. I'm Ralph, okay. Welcome, guys.
And also joining us is the interior designer Jennifer is here as well, in case you have any questions about the finishes of the, of the project.
Okay.
Chris, thanks. Welcome, gentlemen.
So I guess I'll share, we're proposing a steakhouse at 151 Marbledale Road. We submitted the, we submitted the revised drawings back on, I think, Friday morning. Did the board receive all of the revised drawings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to share my screens to show the rest of the drawings to everybody.
Yep.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we're proposing a steakhouse I want to do on Marbledale, and I'll walk you through the four plans. It's, it consists of a basement, a first floor, and a roof with seating and a full bar on the roof. So accessibility notes here. So here we have the basement. We'll start at the ground floor, actually. So the approach to the building comes from Marbledale Avenue, which is to the left of my drawing here. And the main entrance is, is right here, and we're proposing a an awning over that entrance. And we are, you go in, make a, make a left, and there'll be a hostess area, walk through the restaurant with the main bar, located right next to the elevator, with seating all throughout the rest of the space. Three private party rooms, if they choose to have a private party. Look at the back of the building, the kitchen, it will be tucked away in the back of the building at the rear of the lot over here, and we are providing five, on the first floor, five bathrooms, two full ADA compliant. And when you walk in, you go down the stair to the cellar, which is located right here, to the basement, sorry. You have another two full ADA bathrooms, along with prep kitchen, storage, keg room, liquor room. storage, keg room, liquor room, uh, and then the existing mechanical rooms and elevator pits that are there. And, and if you go back to the first floor here. Uh, so we are also, uh, proposing to relocate the two, well, one of the, uh, handicap parking that's in front of the building. Uh, we're just going to move it to the, to the right of the existing one. If you see on the plans here, there's an existing loading zone, the existing, uh, companion loading zone next to the two spaces. And so we're just going to flip that to the other side so that, uh, Zef can allow for, uh, a valid parking, um, uh, attendant there at the front of the, uh, of the entrance. And so then we go to the, you go to the roof, there's two ways to get to the roof. We can go to the, the elevator or you can go up to, through the stairs. And when you get to the roof, there's a small penthouse waiting area up here with two full ADA compliant, uh, bathrooms. To the right here, we have a full, uh, we have a mechanical area which will be completely screened that you can see on my exterior elevations, which I'll show in a second. And a- at this time, we still don't have the, the formal equipment picked out for the, uh, for the kitchen down below and, and the AC and all that type of stuff. But all of this will be completely screened from the exterior, uh, and from anyone in the parking lots and from the neighboring properties will, um, you could see the heights of the screening walls. So when you get out onto the roof, uh, the roof will be raised on a bison pedestal, uh, tile system, which is, uh, we've installed a multiple times and it will cover the entire public area of the roof. Um, and on the roof, they'll have a, a bar, a pergola. And along the parapet of the roof will be another screening device, uh, which the interior designer could talk about as well. Once we look at the, uh, exterior elevations. So the total.
I ask a question before you leave the stage. You indicated that, uh, you're, you're putting, uh, a, a new pa- a paver system on the roof area, right? And typically you're looking at anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four inches of space. My question is, is your whole elevation, is that at the same plane that your roof, uh, your deck elevation is going to be at?
The, the roof, the, the pavers will be roughly at the, all the same elevation. I, I don't know exactly how the, I mean, the roof slopes towards Marble Dale, but it will be, the pedestals are adjusted so that.
No, 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 what I'm saying is if you look at the double doors there, right? Put your mouth by the double doors, right? So let's call that zero zero elevation as far as.
Yep.
So I'm assuming right now it's probably at the same level or a few inches above the, uh, the roof line, right?
Yep.
How much higher?
Probably a foot. Ten inches at least.
Ten inches, okay, so you check, check to make sure your bison, I, I'm not sure they go that low, but just check.
Okay, yeah, no, no, they, they, yeah, okay, understood.
It's gonna be at the same plane, there should be no stuff there because.
No, of course, yeah, yeah, no, it will be at the same plane as soon as you, yeah, yeah, there won't be any stuff. Um, okay, yeah, um, and I, yeah, I could provide a detail at the door jam if you'd like on the revised set.
Um. I quickly saw a section through one of your details.
Yeah, so on the, on the roof, um, on, just so, I'll just keep going through the drawing. This is a reflective ceiling plan showing the lighting of the, of the three, uh, the three floors. Uh, let me see. And then so here, here's our seating plan showing all the tables. Um, and, uh, well, we talked about at the working, uh, meeting to show the seating of the out, outside. On the first floor, there's three patios that are covered, uh, with a, um, the existing awnings that are out there. So we, we showed, uh, each, each patio has about eighteen people, well, has eighteen people we have proposed there. Uh, so if you keep going to here, so the roof, the roof section I showed, just so, so you see, um, this was at the section of the, um, what is it, the, uh, the, the screening area so that when you see that the, the mechanical items will all be lower than the actual pedestal, so they're not going to gain height, uh, you know, to be seen from the public there at all. So if you look at the, the roof detail, and, and, uh, we're going to have, uh, planters surrounding the screen at the mechanical area, which is part of the, the bison system. They have bison cubits called, and they have planters that, that lock into the, the grid as well. So whatever the difference is in heights will confirm, but the, the mechanical equipment won't be as, as high of, you know, it won't be on the same plane as the pedestals, it will be as whatever done is necessary. Um, and it will be covered by the exterior screen. So if we, if we keep moving along with the drawings here, uh, we have accessible seating, uh, shown here for all of the, uh, dining surfaces throughout the whole restaurant. Go down here, we have, uh, our proposed exit plans and the capacity of all of the floors along with the parking requirements, as I spoke with Bill last week. Uh, the parking requirement was one parking space per a hundred square, uh, patron square feet. So we have total of patron square feet, six thousand three hundred and eighty-three, a hundred square feet, uh, per a hundred square feet, so it's sixty-four spaces required and per, uh, Zef and Ralph's lease with the owner, uh, they are provided eighty-five parking spaces in that, in that parking lot. So we, um, we, we are good with the, the parking, uh, load. So. We keep going here, I could show you, yeah, the exterior elevation, so this will be the, the front pull-up elevation right here with the, uh, with an awning here and also another two awnings, overhangs over here. Uh, the screening device to block the mechanical will be right up here on the right. We were, we were planning on some sort of decorative garden wall here with a trellis and, and growing vines on this wall. And, uh, you could see the, the planters up here with the pergola, roughly the, almost the same height as the penthouse and the retractable, uh, the retractable umbrellas which will attach to the parapet. That, uh, can be used when, if there's, you know, inclement weather or, or, or to shade the sun. Uh, this is a view from Marble Dale Avenue, straight, straight from Marble Dale Ave- Avenue, Marble Dale Road, I'm sorry. And so we have the three, uh, glass nano wall type, uh, partitions with the parapet above with the roof terrace, the pergola, everything we, we, we spoke about and you, I mentioned on my plans. Here are the, uh, the proposed exterior finishes for all of the exterior materials as we talked about at the working meeting. If we keep going here, the, uh, the south elevation here, nothing really, uh, architecturally fun about this elevation. It won't really be seen too much, but it's, uh, it shows the exterior, the roof terrace up top. And also now here's the west elevation which shows the egress stair from the roof, which is, will, which will be a prefabricated steel stair that goes from the roof and it's going to go down to a platform to clear the twelve ang- the twelve foot maximum vertical rise required per, uh, New York State Building Code, section one oh one, one point eight. And then there'll be another, there'll be roughly a, about eleven feet, eleven foot platform that will lead you with another stair, another concrete stair that goes down to the, uh, to the, to the grade, the sidewalk. Uh, and the same with the, the, uh, the stair from the basement, which is already existing and it is, uh, twelve feet from the bottom of the, the, um, the basement to the top of the, the grade at the parking lot. So there are some more interior elevations here that the interior designer proposed.
Hey Chris, while you're there, could you talk about the, uh, enclosure that you're gonna have over the stairs for the board?
Yes, yes, when I spoke to Bill, uh, we are going to, we're going to have a similar. So if you see here on the side of the, the, the pull-up of the building, you'll see the awnings that we have and that material that we'll use for the awnings. We're going to, uh, cover the concrete stair that comes from the basement because with rain, snow, uh, the elements that we need to proper drainage and, and, you know, make sure the stairs don't, uh, get slippery and, you know, are affected by the snow at all. And those will be supported by a post that goes into an existing curb that is currently there. It's concrete curb, we'll, we'll, uh, install these into the curb and it will slope away from the building to, uh, bring all the water, uh, to the sidewalk, to the parking lot, to the drainage that's, that's existing. Uh, so that's shown here.
Uh, right.
You don't need one for the top staircase?
Well, it, it's going to be, um, it's going to be prefabricated steel and I, uh, let me see. I, we could include, we could include one, but, uh, it, it's going to be, I believe, an open riser stair. Uh, so and, and with the diamond plate, um, uh, treads, so in terms of, uh, slippage and stuff, that, that shouldn't be a problem. Um, but i- if, if the, the board proposes, we, we enclose it, then, you know, we could.
Well, i- if it's required by code, you should, you should, uh, I understand that it's an eager staircase.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, typically it's required by code to, to, to have a cover over it so you don't have any, um, you know, slippage and fall. But the other question is, this is probably going to be used in the summer, late spring to late fall. It's not going to be, the, the roof is not going to be used in winter. I don't believe that's what the initial indication was. So Bill, I'll leave that up to you, whichever you.
The proposed stair for the upper staircase, as it's constructed, is argued that the open, uh, stairs with the metal meet that requirement.
Open stairs?
The, the tread itself is open steel, so the water and moisture will fall through it and land on the awning down below.
Okay.
It's perfect.
Okay, it's like a great.
Yes, 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 yes.
I copy, yeah, that's, that's.
And again, that wasn't, yeah, okay, um. And, and so fr- from, if, if I could continue here to the interiors, uh, again, I'll just, the interior elevations that the designer prepared. Um, these are some interior elevations looking at the, uh, the, this is looking out towards Marble Dale here and elevation C, just, just sort of walking you through. Um, and if you, if you want to take a look at the, where these are taken, we could go through, uh, each, each individual. But these are more design aspect that the designer could talk about. Uh, these are the views of the interior party rooms and the private rooms. And. What's here? This is a r- rough exterior interior elevation of the, of the roof. Looked like typical building section here. Again, most of the building is, is just empty shell structure right now. And, and the ADA, uh, compliance, typical, uh, interior elevations of the bathrooms. And, uh, a- and, and when we talked last at the planning, um, uh, at the working meeting, uh, you were talking to Zef about the hours of operation and his, uh, you know, how he will run the restaurant. I, I'll give it over to the Zef to discuss, uh, the hours and, and timeframe and all that type of stuff.
Cheers, Zef. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
About the hours, uh, I'm sorry. Um, for now, I plan to about twelve o'clock, kitchen till ten P M.
So twelve, so it's twelve.
Till ten, yes.
Ten P M, that Monday to Friday or, uh?
No, actually, be right, it'll be Monday, uh, the seven days to start with. Most likely we're gonna close Mondays before, for beginning, we give a try how it works. So we tested how Mondays from both of our close one day, we don't know which day yet. And, uh, kitchen will be closed probably for, uh, and weekends, Fridays and Saturdays, be closed eleven, weekdays at ten o'clock and Sundays most likely nine o'clock.
Okay, so, um.
Roof, rooftop, we asked about that one?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm asking for ten P M, is possible?
Uh, anything's possible, so, so let's talk, because I, I'm concerned about the, the roof, uh, plan. I think it's nice, very nice to have that, it's always beautiful. But we also have residential, as I mentioned, we have residential right behind, you know, uh, you. So we want to be cognizant of the people who live on the hill there and I know a lot of them have small children, so, um, you know, I think, um, you know, if you're going to do, let's say Tuesday through, let's say Thursday, uh, let's say whatever, uh, twelve, twelve o'clock till, let's say, I don't know, nine o'clock, that double?
Um, I mean, I, I don't see no issue, to be honest with you. I mean, honestly, like I said to you last week, I don't think it's gonna be any noise. I'm not gonna have no music, I'll be a lot of music, no parties, we're more like just to sit down dinner. And, uh, if it's nine o'clock, that's, that's fine.
Okay, and then we could, we could do ten o'clock, we could do ten o'clock, uh, Friday and Saturday and do, uh, nine o'clock again on Sunday, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, and you said you're not gonna have any music there, right? So what happens if, for example, if you have some sort of a party, sweet sixteen or, uh, uh, whatever, a, a wedding? I mean, we gotta make sure that I don't want to take that aspect away from you. I'm just saying, I think it's okay to have music up there as long as it's done within, you know, uh, respectfully to, to your neighbors.
Absolutely, no, no, there's, there's no question about this. I'm not, I'm not gonna have their music to, to, I mean, to, to disturb all the neighbors. I don't want to, any, my main thing is not doing any issue neighbors. I want to keep, keep that completely out of my way.
Yeah, because again, you'll be in an open area, like it's on, does carry.
Soft music, it's gonna be on. And to be honest with you, if somebody complains, I can load the music, but I'm, I'm trying to keep as low as I can, just don't bother anybody.
All right, as long as we keep that in mind.
Yes.
Uh, um, so.
Antonio, Antonio, just on that note, what, what is the, uh, Bill, what is the brew, uh, brewery hat now? They're, they're allowing music, uh, in their open space, correct?
I, I believe that they go till ten o'clock at night.
At o'clock, right.
Yeah, and if they want to have special events, they have, they're, they're pulling separate permits for that, right?
Uh, they're allowed, and I don't remember the exact number, it's either three or four events. And anything, they would have to come back to the zoning board.
Okay.
Because I, I know there's been some issues with the, uh, broken bow where, you know, sometimes it, it gets a little rowdy. Uh, you know, and I know there's been some complaints from, from, uh, people, um, on the hill. Yeah, so I just want to make sure, we're not, we're not just adding to it. And again, I, I want to make sure we're all good neighbors, you know, we'll have to, uh, be respectful of one another. We want these guys to succeed, uh, you know, and have, you know, a great business. But, you know, we also want to make you sure that, you know, we're cogn- cognizant of, you know, our residential, um, community.
Sure, I agree with a hundred percent.
So the other thing is, you know, you're making, uh, in, in the elevations, you, you're making some modifications. So I think it would be helpful if you can, uh, I don't know if you have any sort of renderings available, uh, that you could share. And then in addition to that material, like for example, in your, in your front entry, it looks like you're gonna have some sort of stone wall there that I believe doesn't currently exist. You're, you're putting in some, uh, overhangs, so just to get a flavor of what those elements are going to be. Uh, so typically what happens is, you know, materials are provided to us that we can look at, some, 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 uh, renderings as well. So we know exactly what's being proposed and, you know, and we set up, we can review properly. So, so the next meeting, if you can have that, uh, prepared, that would be, uh, great. Uh, so you could send, yeah, you could email, you know, the documentation to the building department if you have any samples. Uh, they can be sent to the building department with, with a look at them or if you, if you could just create some sort of a, a digital, uh, sample board that you can share with the, uh, with the planning board.
Okay. Uh, I will.
What are the other concerns that I have is, can you, can you go to your roof plan?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, right, so, so I mean, you, you're gonna put pavers, you're going to put equipment, you're going to put, you know, uh, furniture. Uh, again, I'm not sure what the, uh, roof was designed for, what kind of load capacity? You know, uh, but I, has anyone checked to see, uh, you know, what the live load, that load design was for this, uh, structure?
I, I, I will confirm that by the, the next meeting and, and confirm that, but, you know, uh, yeah, I mean, it was always, from my research, it was always designed for, for, um, I mean, even more people than I, than we planned on having up here. Um, and, and, and more, more people actually, you know, I mean, per the building code, the occup- occupant load is much higher than what we're proposing.
Um, I'm not questioning that, what I'm questioning is, uh, you know, can this roof support this additional load?
Yep. All right.
Every time I'm involved is, in the terraces, for some reason, we're always, always have to reinforce.
Yeah.
You know, the, the terraces in order to, the, the roof setback to create terraces, so.
Chris, he's talking about the live and dead load.
You know, no, I understand, no.
Yeah, yeah, so I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure, you know, it looks great. I think it's gonna be wonderful, I just want to make sure someone's thinking about that.
Yep, yeah, and on my next, we can include, uh, yeah, the structural analysis of the, of the dangers that are going on, um, that, that's there existing and to make sure that, you know, we'll, we'll have an analysis of it to make sure that it, it can hold the live and dead loads.
Yeah, I guess, it's just, it's just for everyone's safety, uh, you know, to make sure.
Yeah, of course.
We don't have any surprises, like Zev and his partner are gonna, you know, uh, uh, invest a great deal of money on all this. We don't want any issues for that. All right.
Not a problem.
Yeah, so, so I think, you know, to move this process forward, just for the next meeting, uh, for the workshop, if you could, again, have the, uh, the materials, the, the renderings of the exterior, uh, do, um, um, uh, some, some, uh, information on the, the roof, uh, design, uh, the mechanical area, just, again, I'm not, again, I know you don't know the equipment yet. I don't know what's height of your doneage, I see a six foot, the barrier all the way around. It seems to reasonable, again, I'm not sure if you're putting a, a twenty ton unit up there, ten ton unit, uh, you know, so some of those units will get kind of large. So because this is a big space and it's got a large, large occupant, so.
Yeah.
You know, you gotta have some big pieces of equipment up there, so.
Yep.
Uh, I just want to make sure, you know, we're, we're not going to, uh, see all of that. Uh, and again, what would be helpful is to understand what the screening is going to be, the construction, the, uh, the colors, uh, things of that nature.
Okay. Yep, we'll work with the interior designer and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get that, that whole, that whole sample package to you guys, uh. Yep, we'll work with the interior designer and we'll, we'll, we'll get that, that whole, that whole sample package to you guys prior to the next meeting and we'll, and so that's it.
Right, and then I think, Bill, are you okay with the, the parking? That was discussed?
Well, that's, that parking is what we use in the other districts.
Right.
In this district, there's no number, it's up to the planning board.
It's fine, and again, I, I think, you know, there's plenty of parking, a lot of this, a lot of these events are gonna occur after hours, where all the businesses on Marble Dell, for the most part, are Are shut down, you know, with the exception of Broken Bow and, and, you know, a couple of other businesses on Marble Dell, so I think there's gonna be ample parking. You know, we had talked about, you know, if, you know, you guys are going to do a A wedding where you're gonna have, you know, several hundred people, will we have the capacity? I mean, it seems like, I mean, the, the parking lot for the hotel is, is large, and so I'm assuming that, you know, whoever's coming for this wedding, for argument's sake, some people will be staying at the hotel, so I, I think, you know, we have plenty of parking, I don't think there's gonna be any major issues.
Check, but I think I remembered the number being two hundred and sixty-three spaces.
The, the lot itself, the, for the hotel?
For both the hotel and the restaurant.
Okay, all right.
Hey Chris, it's Mike from building department. I remember, I just had a question for you. With the, the venting of your bathrooms and the mechanical venting, how do you do that in the system that you're proposing that goes on the roof?
It should, oh, so they would be vented right out of the roof plan, sorry, hold on.
I'm guessing they're gonna come out in the area where the mechanicals are on the roof?
Then they gotta repipe everything, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're coming right out, right out of this wall.
Okay, okay.
I would imagine those would come up on the roof, no?
Yeah, oh, yeah, the roof or the wall, I mean, no one's gonna see this side, so we'll see. But, yeah.
It'll sort of be over there by the mechanical room, probably all your venting, right?
That's, that's what we're planning, every, everything would be to the back, the, the rear of the, the property.
Okay. And then, just so you know, we just, we actually just gave the, the plan over to the fire department, so we're hoping to have their comments for the next meeting.
No problem, sounds good.
Do we, Bill, do you have any concerns with the traffic on Marble Dell, like the queuing up, you know, they're gonna be queuing into The, the property because the building, can you go to the first floor plan?
No problem.
Do you have a site plan, may I chance?
I have this, just this rough, so I don't have the rest of the, everything.
That's fine, if you could just zoom in on a little bit. So Bill, it looks like, you know, you're gonna go in at least, it looks like eighty to a hundred feet. You know, where the, but they're proposing to have their valet. So, you know, it's gonna have at least, you know, five-six cars. Do we have any issues, especially when you're having a large event? Queuing on Marble Dell, I mean, it's gonna be on a weekend, typically it's after hours. Does anyone see any issues? Should we have Noah look at that?
If you want to, I can. But I mean, all that was taken into consideration when they came in for their initial site plan, because we knew the restaurant was proposed.
Okay.
But if you want, I can ask Noah to take a quick look and see if he sees any changes.
Okay, or maybe just have a conversation with him and just say, you know, was, I'm, I'm sure it was reviewed as part of the Initial application for the hotel and the restaurant.
Yeah, Antonio, it was, it was that whole review when we were planning for the hotel.
Okay.
How does the hotel parking tie in in the rear? I forget how we
It continues, it goes all the way
It continues, so it's, it goes all the way in the back.
You can enter here, go, go all the way through and go out the other way.
Oh, the hotel, but it was definitely part of the whole
Okay.
Element of the hotel.
Okay, I just wanna make sure for, you know, because a hotel, it, it, it's different traffic patterns for hotels, for argument's sake, people coming in, let's say randomly, right? Whereas, you know, whereas if you're having a party, per se, right? It starts at five, six, or seven, and ends at ten, eleven, whatever, so you have that initial mass just coming in, in that, you know, half hour period, or forty-five minute period. You know, so again, it's a higher volume, and again, the road is wide, typically these are, you know, these events are You know, most of Marble Dell on a weekend is shut down When this is happening, so again, I don't think it's a big issue, but maybe, Bill, if we just have a quick conversation with Noah, just to Make sure that he doesn't see any issues.
I will give him a call tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, does anyone else on the board have any questions? This applicant?
I did. I'm sorry, my question was in relationship to the parking as well. Is the valet parking the same entrance and exit of the regular customer parking?
Yes.
Okay, so in the event of valet parking, the customers will pull up in front of the, the venue. And as someone else coming in, parking on their own I, I'm trying to figure out how that's gonna work, can you just explain that?
If I have a valet parking, valet parking only, nobody's gonna park on their own.
Oh, so you're only doing valet parking?
If I have a valet parking, it's, let's say, slow nights, Monday night, valet parking, or weekends, I'll valet parking only, nobody's gonna park their own cars.
Okay, thank you.
No, because you can't, but otherwise there'll be cars all over the place. Everything, we'll be all valet only.
Okay, right, because my concern was, what happens if somebody wants to go into the parking lot? They end up on a valet line and then they end up doing a U-turn on Marble Dell, you know?
You're correct on that, hundred percent, but no, it's not gonna happen.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
No questions, cheers, thank you.
Okay. All right, is Paul on? I don't, I'm not sure I see him.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, any questions, Paul?
No, I'm good, I think Adrian asked the question I was going to ask.
Okay, all right, so at this, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing, can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is anyone here from the public to speak on this application? Charlie, is anyone in here other than us?
Ah, yes, and so far, I believe that's it, no questions.
All right, so at this point, I, I make a motion to keep the public hearing open for until next month, can I have a second?
So I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
What, what other question that, that I'm thinking about is, where were you, are you planning to place your garbage?
There's a site in the, in the rear of the building already designated for a For container.
Dumpster, yeah.
For dumpster.
Where is that, I'm sorry? I'm not familiar with that, sorry.
It's behind, behind the kitchen.
Can we, can we just show it on your plan next?
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Can you, can you pull the site plan, let me see that?
Yes, sorry. It's, it's right, I believe it's right here, right? It's, it's right
More back, more back, right there, right there.
Yeah, can we just make sure that we have it showing on the plan?
Yep, I'll revise the site plan to include a little bit more information, so you guys are comfortable with the parking, the valet And, and yeah, just the, the traffic and the garbage disposal.
And is the garbage going to be screened?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and, and how often is your garbage picked up?
Probably three times a week.
Three times a week, is it private carding, are they gonna use a village?
Private, 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 yeah.
And do they come, I guess, during the morning?
They come in the morning, usually they come between seven and eight A M. I don't make much noise either, to be honest with you, just pick it up and leave.
You want me to show you where the original dumpster was to go? Because it was, was to go all the way to the rear of the property.
Yes, that's where, that's where it is.
That's where it is, Bill.
Yep.
It's there, the, the cutouts, you know, the whole thing is there.
Yes, that's correct, it is.
Yep, it's already there, yep.
Bill, when the plans come in, can you pass them on to Frank DiMarco, just for any comments?
Sure.
Right, yeah, Frank, we should probably send this to Police Department and Fire Department, right?
Fire got it yesterday.
So I said Frank DiMarco's our DPW, head of DPW, if you're
Antonio, Fire Department picked it up today.
Okay, good, thank you.
Do you want me to send the, the digital file as well? Would that be easier? Because I know, okay, okay. Because it's a sixteen-page set, it's a pretty bulky set for
I know, yeah. Yeah, you could, yeah, with the next iteration, just send the digital file for, for the tiny boy members, and I'm, I'm sure the building department still wants our copy.
Yep, no problem.
Yeah, please, so we just keep the amendments and get rid of the rest of it.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? All right, so I, I guess we will teach other at the next Workshop, hopefully we'll have all the information we need, so we can finalize this project and you guys can get going, on your merry way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no
Have a good night.
Okay, so if you have no other business, I make a motion to close the public hearing, can I have a second, please? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, guys, good evening.
Here. Thanks, guys.
Hey, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Oh, yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much, everybody, it's not good.